And with the recording. This is a. Good morning and welcome to this week's commission work session. It's a public meeting, not a public hearing, so no public comments will be taken. Today is Monday, November fourth. It's just after eleven thirty. Our first item is a discussion interaction for the approval of the minutes for the Weaver County work session held on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. All entertain a motion? I'll second that motion. All in favor? My motion carries. We now have the privilege of being here able to hear from Charlie, you at Rick over Sean Wilkinson and Gary Myers regarding the twelfth street planning overlay and regulate general plan items. Go ahead.
Hi. So there's been a little bit of discussion over the last year or so about possibility of doing a twelfth street overlay in the general plan or or through a a rezone map amendment. You guys have set aside a little bit of money for us to explore the idea next year. I just wanted to come and make sure I had a pretty good understanding of what it is that you guys are hoping for in all of this.
Does the exploration include the opportunity for the public to comment?
Yes.
Great.
Did you look for me over there?
So a couple of things to think about. I just wanted to make sure you guys have a full understanding of what our current plan shows. And then I've got an example of what could happen potentially with some adjustments.
Now. Well, sorry to keep jumping in here, but no, we. And some of this too admittedly is for the recording. If people I hope would come in and listen to this. But they had the the mayors and city councils who represent their respective areas. Each had workshops within the last two weeks with the Wasatch Front Regional Council or the WFRC. People who want to know more can go to wasatchchoicetwentyfifty.org. But they 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 put down where they saw the growth happening and lines and roads and things like that. And so Wasatch Choice twenty fifty is where they can go to find that out. Will those maps or that input that those mayors and city council had? Will they be present on these on on some of this stuff? Because some of that I would say encroached, but it's not the right word, but it had to have bled over into our into the unincorporated portion. And I'm talking mainly about the Hooper, the the Western Boundary Cities, the the Hoopers, West Havens, Marriott Sladeville's Plain City out that way.
Yeah, so the way.
But all the cities participated, but that was specifically with our planning was that out that way.
Yeah. So the way those maps are generated from the beginning is they take the each jurisdictions future land use map, the map that you have. This is our adopted future land use map. And they go in there and they populate mostly based on streets, but a little bit based on commercial areas as you saw on those maps. Or future potential commercial areas. They populate the maps for the purpose of designing the regional transportation plan for the future. They also do that in a cycle. Every two years they do it again. So if we miss last year's cycle, they say, oh, we'll be starting that tomorrow, you know, or we'll be starting that next week or whatever to start the new cycle for the next two years. So whatever the jurisdictions have on their maps is what their base map is. And then they want to go and ask those elected officials and those appointed officials. Do we still have it right? Or are you thinking about making changes? So the changes that we may be thinking about along twelfth street corridor probably won't make it in this two-year period of of changes. Well, unless we make them very quickly, but they will make it on in the next cycle after that, if we do make significant significant amount of changes. So. I put a little bracket around twelfth street in purple, kind of hard to see. I apologize for the quality of the maps. I always get in a fight with the printer, and so I end up having to just do the lowest qualities, but actually prints. These are big documents and so it takes a little bit for those to actually get really nice high resolution maps punched out. So we've got a few different things, and I wanted to guide your attention to the future land use categories here on the side. Most of this yellow that we have, you guys already know, probably most familiar with is the medium to large size residential lots. The general plan says, generally speaking, fifteen thousand square foot average lot sizes. If it's master planned, maybe you put more in there. If it's lot averaged or or street connectivity compliant, then maybe it's fifteen thousand square feet divided by or the gross area divided by fifteen thousand square feet. That's kind of what the general plan says about the yellow. This next one here, and by the way. Having only two, essentially two residential designations on your general plan isn't very common amongst other general plans that you'll find. Because because traditional zoning tells us that for some reason, a half acre lot does not sit very well next to a quarter acre lot. That's traditional zoning mechanism. Now, the industry, the planning industry is trying to help push jurisdictions towards a better practice, a best practice of doing a little bit better at the call it zoning reform. Where in a lot of cases, it doesn't really matter if it's a single family dwelling, doesn't really matter if it's a half acre, a quarter acre. They they do match well together. In fact, what's really of greater concern is your transportation networks. It's where your density is going to be. So quarter acre matters because if you just do flat quarter acre lots everywhere, you have a lot more than just flat. You got twice as many from half acre lots, right? So if your density matters, where's your density points going to be? And where's your transportation corridor? And where's your infrastructure and all that stuff? And we took that to heart when we worked on this general plan. We said, well, we do want to have a single family-ish area. And the yellow is predominantly that single family-ish area.
There's a darker yellow and a lighter yellow, isn't there, Charlie?
There is kind of a greenish.
Can you differentiate that on the map for me just really quick?
Apologize. You won't find it on this map. That greenish is in the Uta Highlands area right now, only in the Uta Highlands.
Okay, so this color to me, Charlie, is different than this color right here.
Oh, gotcha. Wait, this color right here or this color right here?
That color right there is different than this color over here.
Good question.
One of the lighter shade.
Yeah, so this one actually has crosshatched white lines over top of it.
I see that.
And that stands for adjacent city annexation area. So the only difference in this line here between here and here is just that this is in West Haven's annexation area. This is not the the underlying yellow is still the same. So when we put the map together, working with the general plan or with the planning commission, working with you guys. We we generally painted a lot of yellow out here because it's a lot of acreage. It's just we're not going to know what is appropriate right here or right there until somebody asks the question, right? Until landlord comes in and says, we want to do X, Y, and Z. It was a really easy answer if they came in asking for fifteen thousand square foot lots or somewhere in these areas. But if they want to do something different, kind of like we see with the this project here. What is it that they should ask for? And these guys have to go through a general plan amendment because what the plan shows for their project right now is agriculture.
Which is not even single family.
Not. Technically you can, but yeah, but.
It's not yellow, it's one same.
Yeah, the designation is for agriculture. Yeah. So with that in mind, mixed use residential, a lot of times people are looking at that orange as if that means apartment complexes. And there's a lot of orange on the map. That's not what the plan says.
I don't want any apartment complex.
Agreed. Agreed. So the plan doesn't say apartment complexes. Plan says mixed use residential is a is higher density than the medium to large lot. But it doesn't say how high. Basically, what the plan says is developer, if you have orange on your on your property, propose something that can get through the process. So propose something the planning commission can sign off on and that the county commission can send off on. Now, there the general plan does have some standards on what is good, what is bad, what works, what doesn't work. For these orange areas, we'd like to see some of that missing middle housing, you know, the not just single family large lot, but maybe it's single family small lot, maybe it's single family attached, maybe it's some condos under some circumstances.
Do you remember, Charlie, those million dollar plus homes down there on the quarter lot called the? It was called the Hampton.
Hamptons.
Hamptons.
Yep.
Yeah. Down there along the shore of, you remember that, the shoreline of Utah Lake?
Yep.
Yep. The neighborhood, one of them was fourteen million dollars.
Yeah.
On a quarter of an acre.
Yeah.
Of course, these don't sit along the lake, but they could potentially sit along that. A house like that could sit along a river.
Yep, that's right.
Which we have a lot of, we have probably more, we probably have more a bank or we have more riverfront, riverfront or waterfront property because of the river waterfront footage.
Yep, agreed. So the orange areas, it could be single family all the way up to whatever other kind of residential you guys bring on in there. If you do ever want skyscrapers or whatever that are just residential, maybe orange could do that. Now, that's kind of an extreme stretch, right? Maybe a thousand years from now. That being said, if you look along twelfth street all the way up until about this point here, which is about fifty nine hundred west. We've got mixed residential following the entire twelfth street corridor and following the south side of the railroad track.
And mixed residential means that there's commercial on the bottom with something on top.
No, mixed residential is any kind of residential that you can think of. The mixed use commercial would be commercial on bottom with residential above. So we do have some mixed commercial here and some here. We've got a little down there, there.
So that is that forty three hundred west or thirty five hundred west?
Thirty five, forty seven, fifty five, which doesn't quite exist yet. And then big master plan development, you guys know what's going on down there. So along the twelfth street corridor, there are a lot of options for people to ask for a variety of different types of land uses. If you're right here in this area, do you have to do mixed use commercial? No, but mixed use or general plan says is a bias in best use. So it's probably a better idea to do mixed commercial right here along the street, that lighter pink color. See that here as well? That's vehicle oriented commercial. Makes a lot of sense to have vehicle oriented commercial right there along the the highway. Couple of things that we pushed against a little bit when the planning commission, the county commissioners were talking about the twelfth street corridor was there was an idea that maybe it's all vehicle commercial all the way down twelfth and all the way down forty seven hundred. One best practice that planners like to push for are these commercial nodes. And if you do just linear commercial, all you're going to do is get strip malls up and down forty seven hundred twelfth street. But if you have these nodes, you're going to have a better, greater scale of property at these intersections that can stimulate a much wider variety of uses that aren't just car oriented. So when this map was made.
Are you, I'm going to just use an example. So let's take Harrison Boulevard, although it may or may be a good or poor example. But you've got where the Albertsons or whatever that's called now up on twentieth and Harrison. Some strip type things up there. And you go a little further to about where the old seven eleven was, and there's a little that has never done very well, but it's a little bit of there. And you go a little further, you hit forty second street or or by the college there. University, there's another little where Jake's over the top was and the Walgreens and Smith's along there. And you get clear out to fifty six hundred. But there are mixed, I guess, from forty second to fifty six, there's some mixed stuff in there along the way, but that that's kind of what you're talking about. That kind of an idea or a plan, right?
That's right. Yeah. Whereas if you just do vehicle oriented commercial along these two primary corridors, you get Riverdale Road, a Redwood Road, Redwood's probably a really good example, all the way up and down.
And I think, I you know, I don't know what people prefer, but I I gotta think that this is something too that's likely thirty, fifty, eighty years away, isn't it?
That's right. Yes.
That's the most important thing to know is thirty, fifty, eighty years away, what will it be?
Yep, that's exactly right. And at any point in time, somebody can come in in these areas here, say, we want to rezone the way that your plan says to, and you guys can say, we're not ready. We know the map says to do it, and we agree that it should be done that way, but not for another ten years, not for another twenty years. You guys have every right to do that.
Well, so here's kind of, I keep talking a lot here, sorry, Commissioner Bolos, chime in, but. We've learned a lot since this, you know, we took a lot of public comment. And and four, five years ago, and we and this is what a result of that. But it seems to me like you keep bringing stuff that wants to push that envelope all the time. And what I want to do is, okay, let's do this now that we've seen what's happened. I haven't, I mean, maybe there are some subdivisions that really rarely come to our attention. We only kind of put them through. But I I want to put them like the stopgap where you guys go down, where they come into your office and say, no. If this is not, no, we're not going to do that. Go back and sorry, that's not going to happen. It should never get, in my mind, it shouldn't even get to a work session or a commission meeting. Or a planning commission meeting. Am I thinking wrong here? Isn't that how it should be? No, but they have the right, though. That's the problem. They have the right to petition for higher density. That's that's law, right? That's law.
And that's what like the Gibson property has done. Is they've submitted a request or an application and paid the fees. And requested that be reviewed.
And that's why we see it.
Right. Which I think is okay because it helps the public discourse. And and if you guys aren't ready for it, feel free to tell us at any point in time. We don't want to even see this one.
Well, I'm hypersensitive, but you know, some of those ideas are pretty good and I don't, you know, but I but on the flip side. I think we need to be able to allow people to make those changes. I know we say we have these meetings and things like that, we get a chance to do that. I want to just be super careful.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. And making little nickel and dime changes for the map isn't usually a good idea.
I'm with Commissioner Bolos on this. These little, what is, what is? The spot zoning is not, I'm not, I don't think that's cool.
I would agree with you.
You can spot zone the whole thing, and then then you've kind of cheated the process of what the real deal was, and I don't want to do that.
Yeah.
It also impacts the utilities and the infrastructure out there in a really negative way.
Yep.
When the spot zoning happens, yeah.
Yep.
Because you get the wrong size of infrastructure put in, and then you then five to ten years down the road, you have to go work it all out and start over.
So Charlie, let me go back to a comment you made. You said something like we might not know what the land is going to appear in. I just don't know if I agree with that. I don't know why we can't look at this, all of this land and say, this is what we want.
Yeah.
And we will sit here and we'll wait until it grows into, because you're looking at the whole puzzle.
Yeah.
Not, I I think there's some truth to what you're saying, and I don't know if I agree fully. I really like the planning commission. We go, you know what? I mean, that was our plan two years ago. We'd like to tweak it. We think something else might belong here, but if they're only looking at the petitioners area, that's a problem for me. And if they look at the whole thing, you go, okay, we're going to revisit this now. We're going to look at X, Y, Z.
Yeah.
Then I can get on board.
Hundred percent agree with you. And I think I think what what I mentioned and what you're saying work well together because it's definitely nuanced. While we may not have the attention on this area here, maybe we don't have all of the understanding of what is happening there because no one's asking the question to develop this right now. When somebody does come in and ask to develop it, that's when we're like, oh, okay. We've got this feature, that X, Y, and Z is happening. Maybe something different is okay. And maybe it's not as high density. Maybe it's less. Maybe it's agriculture or something like that. Maybe we go back to a green color. I agree with you that we do need to make sure we put colors on the maps to have a better idea. The general plan took this map here and it said, over the next few years, county, what we plan to do is go into these neighborhoods and refine so that we can do it on a on a less.
Is that what we're doing right now?
I think that's in part what we're doing now. Yes.
I mean.
Oh, yeah. But you're going to find right along what you're saying, this property here, the the Gibson property, when they came in and asked for some changes, their changes in the beginning, as you saw, ended at their property boundary. Now, we asked them to expand that to this quadrant here. Everything to the north of that. And as I got looking at that proposal, I noticed that there was some bleed, some overflow on this side.
Yeah, for sure. And also south, right? I mean, wouldn't, if we're looking at this whole area, why don't we look at this, you know, when we follow the river or you know what I mean? And like, okay, this is moving, so let's go look at this whole thing.
Yep. And they were showing.
A whole lot more sense from the public perspective because you're not doing it for a person.
You're doing it for the plan. Agreed, agreed. And they had some street layouts that didn't quite fit in with our street plans. And so I came back into the forty seven hundred and twelfth street corridor, that little node that we had already planned and made some fine tune adjustments. Now, this is by is by no means a map that has been publicly presented yet. The planning commission will see this we'll bring tomorrow. There are a few different things that are happening on this map that I wanted to kind of pique your guys with interest on and maybe get some direction. One of the things that we didn't do when we were working on that map over there is we didn't go much beyond the West Weaver corridor when it came to what happens along twelfth street over in this area here.
Is it because you didn't know where it's going to be?
In part because we didn't know where it was going to be, in part because there are several, quite a few residential homes along that street. And so we didn't want to make everyone feel like they were being displaced yet. That's part of it. You get get the politics involved in there. However, we do know that we've got a request to make a change to that property right there.
Hold on. Oh, sure. Yeah.
And that's right at an interchange or a planned interchange for that highway. We show all of that on that map there as being yellow. In fact, yellow is that's all yellow up in there. Maybe we could take this opportunity to reach out and get some vehicle oriented commercial over there at that interchange. I know that these guys, Black Pine, have been asking questions about this property right here. Maybe maybe that property can go to M and T or to commercial of some sort. They're just looking at opportunities. They they want to eventually get a rail spur and they need more property essentially to.
I don't want to, Charlie, here's the thing, is whether the the NEPA requirements or the federal government or whoever it is, I don't want to do the same thing that they did. We we should learn from what they did in Davis County and not take out seven hundred thousand dollar homes that were there a year or two ago, built on a on a quarter and third acre lots. That's not, it's, it's poor planning in my mind. I don't know if that's the right word, but it's just, it's not. And if we know, you know, one of the things we do know is that twelfth turning into nine hundred south is going to be a major corridor. That's a given. The West Weaver corridor is going to be somewhere, if we start to do this correctly in that particular area. And the state, even as they start, we get them to start buying or they have started buying up those parcels. So when we know that there's going to be in that area a likelihood of an interchange because it's because it's so it's going to be a one day a freeway interchange, but a highway interchange, a spooey or something like that. We shouldn't be putting third acre left houses there or even show it on a plan. That's not what that's ever going to be.
In the original version of that, I shouldn't say original. As we were planning this area here, we began focusing our attention when we were making that map more and more westward. This was all, when we were focusing over here, this was all planned to be agriculture. And there are a couple of large landowners that said, you know, maybe we can do better than agriculture in these areas. And so we we assigned yellow, just like we did over to to this area as we did over here. And I certainly can, if we've got that many single family dwellings going on in this area here, there's going to need to be some commercial. There's going to need to be very likely going to be some some big pressure on a future interchange right here with the kind of development you see at hundred and six south in in South Lake.
Yep.
Vehicle oriented, you jump off, go to the gas station, go to Shills right there. I guess Shills is at one fourteen, but anyway, very similar to that. Every one of those interchanges down there have this type of of land planning in the area. We pitched that idea, and I don't remember if it was the planning commission or the county commission, it was later in the process, and there was some concern that maybe the public aren't ready to have that conversation yet. We were so close to adopting the plan. I think that.
That's, no, let's 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 say it straight for what it is. That's exactly what you were told. You were told by the commissioner at that time, you had this portfolio, let's not do that, let's not focus on that, and let's just run it through. Is that true or not true?
That's true.
So so to me, with all due respect, it was to get it over the finish line and not worry about that little piece right there.
Right. Maybe come back later, later, and and redo it, which here we are two years later, it's probably a good later.
It's a good later, but it's it's irrelevant if we don't know that that if we don't know where that highway is going.
That's right.
Right?
Yeah.
That's such a big piece of this puzzle.
But that is true. However, as we plan, we can kind of set that boundary, whether it's there or not, because through our planning as as a developer comes in and puts in roads, for instance, if a developer comes in and does everything out that's on the southwest side of the railroad track out there, so about ninetieth west and between ten thousand, eighteen hundred south and thirty three hundred south, way out, way, way, way out west. If they put in bridges or if they put in a flyover like we saw down in, you know, if they start doing that, that's going to kind of decide where that is. And that could be one or one of the directions of traffic moving further, like having a like that those highways that are going out towards Saratoga from from Provo area, right?
You got it. You got it.
And what happened in Davis County? How come that that planning didn't go down like that?
I can't answer that.
Anybody know?
So you don't.
Why did they buy, why did they buy seven hundred thousand dollar homes?
Well, you don't bought a lot of land to preserve the highway corridor. And they did that without doing the NEPA process, which I mean, they do. Sometimes it's hard to tell which one's supposed to come first. And then when the federal federal regulators got in there, they said, ooh, the land that you bought here, here, and here, the development that you have around here and the type of impact this is going to cause on the wetlands or whatever was significant there was too impactful. They said you should have been aligning it over here the whole time where those houses were. And so those communities were approving homes and neighborhoods, not realizing that the highway.
Because they thought they knew where it was.
Because they thought they knew where it was going to go. They thought they knew that they had the best spot. Now, something that they have, that's one of the reasons why region one, I think, has a little bit of PTSD.
They do. No, I've talked to them.
And we should be able to learn from that and
Right.
hopefully do a better job.
That's right. Something that they have different going on for them than we do for us is on the west side of that corridor, there's nothing. And there's planned to be nothing on the west side. That's that's the edge. That's the hard edge. All that area out there is wetland, it's shoreline for the for most of it. Some of it's still agriculture. But here, where we're planning uses both sides, and we've got developers who want to do things on both sides. I don't think we're going to have as much of a problem.
We are going to be out there on the edge. If they put that other whatever, that's going to be way out west corridor.
Oh, yeah, this, yeah, yep. So that one very long.
Especially as you get out towards the north across there. No, no, no. And our grandkids may not be, really.
So the question that I have for you guys here today is, when it comes to looking at a twelfth street corridor, I think that we can put a map together that shows what we intended to do now. We don't necessarily need to hire a consultant to go back and do that. If we want to go back to the public and have a lot of public meetings and a lot of public discourse, that's where hiring a consultant is going to come in very handy because we just frankly don't have the manpower right now to do that. But if you're looking at something like this, and this is it, this is what you're comfortable with. I've already made the adjustments on the map. We can even adopt this map when we look at adopting, if we do look at adopting the the Gibson project. So a lot of opportunities to make changes now, or we could just focus on this area here when the Gibson project comes through the formal process and look at the broader twelfth street corridor over the next year or so.
I would really like the planning commission to look at all of it. Why not? Especially if that that project that has an application right now impacts property to the east or the south and why not?
I agree. That's one of the reasons why I took the time. It took a couple of days to do. Took the time to make all these adjustments. So my next question is, do you want to go further down nine hundred over in here? And when I say further, what I would recommend we do, if you do want to go further, is look at a little more orange along that corridor, maybe maybe some other node on seventy five hundred west, for example, or on seventy one hundred.
Aren't there buyers looking at that property off and on all the time? So why why wouldn't we? I mean, it makes sense.
So if you were okay with third acre and quarter acre lots, then leave it alone. But if you would like to see something different in these areas, then you probably want to pick it up.
Are you thinking there could be another flyover? If we had the the West Davis corridor go from there, and then we had the way, way, way out west corridor there. Are you thinking there'd be another flyover? Was it seventy five hundred? It's right there. So that one.
This one's at grade, but yeah, this one should be a flyover. But that's seventy five. Here's seventy one. That one should be a flyover. Especially if there's a railroad or a tracks line here and a station, there should be a flyover, at least for pedestrians here. This one is, what is it, sixty seven hundred west flyover. There's, there's the highway. There's, there's the highway. This one is fifty nine hundred right here and we, we didn't originally plan a flyover here. But I think knowing how Black Pine's working and how this development might work, it might be kinda nice to have a highway. Kinda do that.
Well, you know, fifty nine hundred, I mean, those are all lies, eight, 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 eight million, eight million, eight million, eight million, eight million. That's a lot, but.
The plan for us would be set it aside as growth happens, um, in time, if it starts to merit those flyovers. Then we look at, how do we fund it? Impact fees, impact fee facilities.
Can we set up something too that has an impact fee? So that the guys that are, the, doing the development now are paying so much money towards a bridge?
Yes.
Cause the last guy in should be responsible for paying the aid.
Agreed.
Problem with impact fees though is we have to spend those within a certain period of time. We can't carry those forward twenty years.
So something we can do is through public infrastructure districts or other kind of public financing, through development agreements. We can obligate developers to be on the hook for these things. I know this developer here doesn't like the, the idea that there might be four bridges across the railroad here. And I told them, well, at the very least, we're gonna look to you to work on that one and probably work on that one, maybe this one. And over here, if it's just pedestrian bridges for a little while, maybe that's fine. Maybe at some point in the future, the tax income from here, the taxable income from here, these commercial areas will. Plus, impact fees plus whatever else, public infrastructure districts will help us fund, um, roads for the other one. You're, you're touching on a subject that I think is gonna be really important for us. It's to study that, and, and we talked to West Edge Front Regional Council about this recently, as well as, um, our friends at UDA. Study the rail corridor here and figure out how do we, knowing this is very busy corridor and it's never likely to go away anytime.
No, it's a big line.
So long as rail is in existence.
Yeah.
How do we get over everywhere as much as we can? If it's just pedestrian bridges, great. If it's vehicle per di- uh, bridges, great. Let's figure out how do we connect this side to that side. Either that, or we just need to say, this is a future city, that's a future city, and neither the twain will ever talk to each other. Uh, but our general plan right now says, make those connections because when somebody gets off a tracks stop here. This is the village that they're probably going to, they gotta get over somehow.
Which now takes. Okay. Cause we know forty seven hundred is one of them.
Yeah. So if I had my druthers, I would take something like this, run it through the planning commission, public hearing process, run it through your guys' public hearing process. If through that process, it becomes clear that we need a lot more public involvement, then we'll take. This little piece here, separate it, run this on a separate, um, track than the rest of this. So that, that'd be my recommendation number one. Recommendation number two would be the money that we set aside to do all this. If we, when we run it down that second track, if we don't have to do a lot of public invest, uh, public involvement in that. Would be to spend a lot of that on that, um, tracks line, uh. Sorry, the railroad track corridor and figure out how do we remediate the fact that we just got this block right in the middle of our community. Hire someone that knows how to work with the railroad, hire someone who knows how to work with, um, Army Corps and really figure out. How to marry the two sides. Well, that's what I would recommend we do.
If you stage it like that though, I would like you to look at, look at more than just that Gibson property. Like the surrounding area, up to the river, south of the road.
Sorry, yeah, right now, it looks, actually, all of this is relatively different. Going, I, I didn't go past the railroad track very much. So all of that is quite a bit different inside that valley, not just the Gibson property which runs inside of here. So if we just focus on that Gibson one, that's all that would come to you.
Well, my preference is. How about you? I'd rather, I mean, it can change in the future, but I would rather just look at the whole thing. It's just sends a better message to the public that we're planning, that we're actually planning and we're not reacting.
Yeah, I, I love it. I love the idea.
I think where you've got those potential flyovers, listen, here's what. And then we also have to plan, you've done a nice job creating a big, we know that the railroad's there, it's a big solid line that differentiates the. The north from the south, but I'm not wanting to start a civil war out there. But you know, the thing you, you've gotta do is we've gotta decide. East and west out there too. And then we've kinda done this up here on the south side, what about going further to the north? When you talk about those east-west corridors, those plants out there, you know? And maybe, and maybe, they don't even exist, the regular road doesn't, it, it's, you know, maybe it's a hundred foot swath somewhere going out there.
Yep, there's seven hundred there.
Where does that connect even at the east?
Seven hundred, over here?
Yeah.
It's, it's a hard, it's gonna be a hard sell and a hard connection. So right now, just.
Well, there's, hold on, just a second. While we're saying that, let's not spend too much brain power here, but you got something off of four hundred north on the freeway.
True.
Yeah.
We gotta, it would be silly for us not to align it with an existing freeway interchange.
So, there's that.
Yeah, what's that?
That, that's four hundred north.
Okay.
Pioneer comes up, I would suggest if we do a seven hundred, we do something like that. Now, it's gonna take some time and some negotiation with Mary Slaterville, cause they've got some really big flooding concerns in this area. Um, we also have thirty six hundred, which is planned to do this. You won't find thirty six hundred doing this on the West Edge Front Regional Council Regional Transportation Plan. Cause Mary Slaterville says we've got some flooding issues, we don't want that bridge there.
So you're talking about four hundred north coming off to seven hundred south or seven hundred north?
This is seven hundred north here, coming to four hundred.
And, and it's about the same as the crow flies.
About the same.
Kind of, so somebody, where'd we get that? How we get that far off? That's weird, that doesn't line up.
You'll find a few more of those. I, I, I'd advise you not to pay too much attention, as, as long as, as long as nine comes after eight, maybe we're okay. In, in mostly certain cases.
Okay.
So we do have a developer who's coming through the process right now on this property here. We are asking him to at least dedicate land and stuff to the river.
And you ca- do you, do you talk about a hundred foot, a hundred and twenty feet?
So this right here, uh, that's, uh, thirty six hundred west, we're asking for, um, a hundred and. A hundred feet, we're asking for a hundred feet here. Uh, this going across would be eighty feet here. On seven hundred. We do have, this is two hundred south. Goes down to four hundred south. And then back up to two hundred south. So, we do have a lot of these corridors being planned for, most of them being collector streets that are running through neighborhoods. Um, but when we look at these corridors, our plan and our new code, we've made this adjustment, they killed over the last year. Is that houses don't get frontage off of those roads. They face away. So that we've got, um, transportation corridors as opposed to residential structure. Now, I, I'll tell you, my preference would be that the houses face, but they don't get access except for by the rear. Just because it's nicer to have houses looking over onto instead of walls and backyards, um, but. Nonetheless, if their driveway is coming off the back, they're most likely gonna have their house face the other direction. So, let me go back to, uh.
And that would, that's seven hundred then would carry all the way out to.
Up here.
Clear out to there.
Interchange here, at seven hundred, interchange here at two hundred south, interchange at twelfth, interchange at eighteen.
Twelfth or nine hundred, you mean, twelve or nine hundred, but it's the same thing. Say again, so now we got nine hundred?
Nine hundred, sorry, nine hundred, eighteen, about twenty five fifty.
Okay.
Um, that's, that's on our current plan, by the way. All of those things are on our current plan. So all.
So around those dots, those are, to me, twenty five fifty and out there, nine hundred and out there, but, and then. Seven hundred and wherever that comes in, whatever that is way out there, those ought to be nodes.
And this one up here, this one's fourteen and this.
Receiving zone, so to speak.
Hey, perfect. Good note areas, okay. I'll focus on that. I'll, um, I'll bring a little bit more mixed housing along nine hundred coming out to in this area here. One last question, and I'm way over time on this. Um, West Bridge, as they're looking at building across the river in this area here, as they look at reserving this highway corridor and building a bridge. They are thinking about the opportunity to tie their development on this side to development on twenty five fifty. Um, and there's a note right there, so they're having good discussions with these landowners here. We've got green space coming through this area here. The way that.
What a beautiful node that would be surrounded by a beautiful park like at Idaho Falls.
We've had that conversation with those landowners as well. This, uh, West Bridge folks, the flagship guys, they're looking at all the funding that would need to go into the infrastructure and they're thinking, maybe. If we could do some floodplain remediation, maybe we can get a little corridor of residential, um, along that, um, that area there.
You mean million dollar homes? It's right along the waterway.
Million dollar homes.
Okay.
Oh, seven, okay, hang on. Okay, I'll tell them.
No, but I mean, along the waterway, that'd be okay.
Amenity, yeah, good sell.
You guys have given me a really good direction. I'll go and make some adjustments, knowing that if the whole thing gets a little weird. We'll separate this out, run this down a different track, just because this is napkin driven, the rest of it's county driven. If it gets really complicated, we'll come back and talk a little bit about spending some of that money we set aside. Otherwise, I'd love to see that money either spent on staffing resources or on a.
Really, I just want some public involvement, for sure the public input, for sure.
Through a public hearing process, or would you rather see it through, uh?
Go out to the school out there and let them put the dots on the map, input.
I like it.
Thanks, Charlie.
That worked?
You bet.
Okay, great. Thank you. We're gonna now move on to our, uh, item number three, which is the discussion regarding trail impact fees on eighteen hundred south. Let's switch out the room and. Mr. Ambassador. Charlie? Everyone, this next, you know, you're getting a little. Great news, great news. Do we have some other people coming? Sean, uh, Gary Mars, for instance.
No, Gary's out too. I was so focused on this one that I forgot about this, I don't, even though.
Well, let's begin, please. This is item number three, the discussion regarding the trail impact fees on eighteen hundred south. I'd like to start with you, Mr. Wilkinson, in as much as. You represent the grand poobah, if you feel.
Thank you. So, commissioners, we, we met with you recently to discuss eighteen hundred south.
I'm sorry, Sean, I jumped in a little early. Let, why don't you finish? I apologize.
Thank you. This had to do with, uh, the power lines that were within the right of way. And we had a trail corridor that was going to go through that area. So we had that discussion, some decisions were made there. So we went back, we talked as a group, and we wanted to talk about that area as well as expanding that trail. On eighteen hundred south and using impact fees to be able to do that.
Would it run underneath the power lines?
So that's, that's part of the conversation. We'd like to. Yeah, I'll let, I'll let these guys get into the details.
Go ahead.
So long-term plan for those kind of power lines is to bury them, bury as many of those as we possibly can. Um, it's safer, they're unsightly, um, expensive to bury them.
Why are they, why would we bury those where they weren't able to get that done in vineyard and the road went right down underneath it?
Those, those ones were a transportation, uh, or transmission, sorry, transmission.
Are you talking about transmission lines? Where are the transmission lines?
So our main transmission corridor is about twenty six hundred west. There's a very impact, it runs all the way up through, um, JDC Ranch.
Yes, it does.
And we've got one other one that I'm aware of, that's a minor, um, transmission corridor that's, uh, runs through the West Bridge project.
So this isn't a transmission.
No, these are all service lines.
Okay.
Um, so the intention is that all the service lines go underground. As development occurs, the developers underground what's already there. Um, as they put in new trans, uh, tran- power line, service lines, they underground their new ones as well. Um, when this project, State Coach Estates came in, um, uh, we asked them to underground. Part of the challenge was, we also asked them to put a, uh, pathway in. Um, the cost to underground was high, putting a pathway in was high, so. Answer to your question of, do we put the, uh, trail under the power lines? I think the answer is we put it over the power lines. So bury as much of those power lines as we can. In order to move the power li- or put the trail in, they either would have had to move the power lines into the property. Or underground them, so we asked them to underground them, but they didn't realize that that was gonna be part of their cost. Um, and. I don't know if, if, if that wasn't a rezone, I don't know that we could make it part of their cost, cause those power lines, they already exist. Regardless of how many homes this new developer is putting in, um, and so it'd be hard to justify. Um, requiring this developer to move power lines that aren't even necessary to serve their development, basically. By the way, worth that. And so.
But. It's on his property.
It's in the public right of way where the lines are right now. If we put the, if we.
Were they not there when he bought the property?
Um, yes.
Were the power lines in place when he bought the property?
Yes. So the way our current ordinance reads is, if the power lines are on property, they have to bury the power lines. Where these ones are off property and in the right of way, I think we were successful with this developer. This developer actually said, I'll do it if I need to do it. What is it that I need to do? And spent a lot of money, uh, to almost two hundred thousand dollars to get Rocky Mountain Power to bury those lines. That is a county pathway corridor that those lines are going under. And so we wanna look at, as developers come in and they do their portion of these pathways, we wanna look at expanding and extending those pathways across. Neighboring frontages as well. And so we thought it'd be a good, a, a fairly good deal, and this is not oblig- uh, obligatory in any way. Uh, for the county to help pitch in for the difference in cost, uh, to this developer of putting that, um, pathway there. Um, in, in, uh, difference in respect to the sidewalk that he had to put in. And then use these funds to continue, um, going to the west from, this is on eighteen hundred south. From, what is that, thirty nine hundred west, all the way to forty three hundred west. And then on forty three hundred, going north-south, we've got a developer who's already gonna be building a good portion of that pathway on forty three. From eighteen hundred to fourteen hundred, so we just figure we'd go around the corner and tie right into there. So we just wanna make sure you guys are comfortable with us making some, um, budget requisitions for impact fees to help. Offset the, the difference to this developer to build that pathway as well as continue that pathway over to forty three hundred.
So he's buried the lines, you're just asking for our participation in the pathway.
Yeah, and now, and he has very little expectation that we participate. He's gonna, he's building the pathway, he's buried the lines, but he is asking where this wasn't originally part of what he thought he was getting into. If while we're already putting money into an eighteen hundred south pathway, we would help him offset the cost a little bit. What that gives us is a lot of opportunity to work with him. We could offset the cost a lot, we can off, offset the costs a little, a- any amount is gonna help him, I think. He's been really great to work with. Uh, we don't ever like to play favorites, uh, when it comes to developers, but this particular one, he came in, asked all the questions. Um, he's willing to do things, um, the right way, even at his expense. Um, and so he's asking for just a little bit here and there that can help him do that.
When you said. When you said it wasn't, he didn't know that he originally was supposed to do that. Is that on him or on us? Did we disclose that to him at the beginning? Okay, it's on us, then we should, I think we should do a little. What's your recommendation?
Um, we were thinking, Chad, what, what did we talk about a little bit there?
We, we came up, we, we looked at the difference in cost if I remember right, uh, the sidewalk would be in comparison to what the pathway was, which was right around. A little over thirty thousand, I think.
Look, I, I wanna be really clear here. There's a deeper meaning here. I know we're pushing you guys really hard. And I know that you're not, you don't have all the staffing you need. And you, you're, you're put, and you're, and you're stretching. I expect you to make mistakes. And you know who's gonna be the hardest on you all those mistakes? You are. Just don't do it again, cause it costs us money. Don't do it again.
We have written into all of our new development agreements with our rezones, that power will be undergrounded at the developer's expense. We have written into all of our new development agreements with our rezones, that power will be undergrounded at the developer's expense.
Straight.
Learn from our lessons.
Yeah, I'm happy with that. So your ask is thirty grand. About.
I'm sure he'd be happy. He spent two hundred thousand dollars almost. I'm sure he'd be happy with uh.
What's the concrete cost?
Uh, what do we estimate?
So you're gonna do the ground prep with the path and so it'll be hard, it'll be enough where it's okay?
Yes.
We'll be able to run a uh Polaris or something over it for maintenance and things like that. What's the cost?
Uh, so the cost to do the asphalt on that was uh sixty two thousand seven eighty nine. That's a lot more than thirty?
Yeah, that's the, that's the complete pathway. So we were looking at the cost difference of what the sidewalk would be with the addition, uh yeah.
So what is it?
Essentially the addition, which was right around, I think it was like thirty two, thirty five thousand, somewhere around there.
We're good, go ahead.
That's all we need.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, thi- this helps, when we're spending these impact fees and making these things happen, that helps us. Keep Scott Park happy as well, because they do have to be spent within a certain period of time, so. This is good.
I think we'll be back before we get uh in the future to extend that all the way down to forty three hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're gonna be getting some design done on it first, so.
Whether we like the guy or not, I don't even know who it is. Uh, 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 the fact is, is doing the right thing for the right reason, that's okay.
Love it, and plug in for those pathways. Uh, we do have a lot of sidewalks out there that will eventually wanna convert pathways. But every single one of those big roads that we saw on this map here are intended or to have a pedestrian pathway adjacent to.
I'm gonna throw you one more loop, if I can, since we're in the open here. Is that, are you okay with that?
Sure.
You know, I went trick or treating the other night. I don't know how many of you went trick or treating. With my grandkids. And uh, the sidewalks weren't normal size. They were a little wider. Of course, it was a community that had houses in it. That's where you go trick or treating, just in case. We didn't go to a mall. Had residential homes there.
Did you measure how wide they were?
They were at least five feet, maybe six.
So you'll see a lot of four foot in West Weaver right now, but we did already change our code to require five.
Okay, great. I may go back down there and measure that just because of that. They were at least five, maybe six. And I thought, two people could walk. With a stroller, the kids running around, and they're not on the people's lawn, and the whatever, and.
Or at least five.
That was nice.
Yeah, let me know if it's six, cause we can always change our standard. We can set that standard.
Sure made for, and one of the things I noticed is it, it allowed neighbors who are passing by one another to have enough width. It was really nice. And if we look at community and stuff like that, that's what.
Well, these ten foot wide asphalt pathways, you'll be able to ride bikes past each other without a lot of risk.
Well, and then you, and then you've got, that's great, and then you've got, if that, well, for instance, that Gibson, and those people that I don't remember how wide those were in Vineyard. But now I wish I would have looked at it.
If you remember the one in Lehigh, American Fork, they had bike, grass, and then. Pedestrian pathway, and those were five foot wide pedestrian pathways. That led to a twelve foot wide asphalt pathway, which made me start thinking a little bit about a ten foot wide asphalt pathway and wondering if we need to rethink that, but. In time.
You know, it's a lot easier to do it now than it's gonna be to do it in twenty or thirty years, and try to go in that imminent domain stuff. I don't wanna do that. Just do it right up front.
Yeah.
Okay, anything, questions, Commissioner Bowles?
No more mistakes.
Yeah, none.
Great, entertain them, no, but you're good. Gary Myers are here, I had to talk to him about a change order, but that's. Let's go into closed session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that was a unanimous roll call vote, Mr. Erickson, just in case you were counting that.
Is that really? That to be local? I never did that at the city, Jim.
I was taught that.
We're gonna come out of closed session for a moment to so I'll entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're out of closed session now. Now just to go back into another closed session. The reason we're doing this is because the purpose of the previous one was to purchase exchange and real lease the property. This new closed session is discuss permanent pen excuse me pending litigation. I'll entertain a motion to go into pending a closed session. All in favor?
So moved.
Second, all yeah, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. We're gonna come out of closed session for a moment to so I'll entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
Around, see, perfect. He's not ready to commit.
I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to cease to saunter.
I'm moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna cease to saunter in just a moment while I.
That's your one.
I don't think so. Stop the share. 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 Well, I don't know where we are.
I don't know where you are either.
That's okay. We ceased to saunter. We're gonna move on to item number six, which is discussion regarding Eden Acres Storm Drain Project. Mr. Toman, you're here. And we've excused Gary Myers. The Courtland Erickson's here, and so let's go ahead with that presentation, please.
All right, so they have begin again work on Storm Drain in Eden by the cemetery. And as they've worked their way up the road towards Carlos and Harley, they've come to two old metal pipe crossings under the road. And they're corrugated metal that's probably been there for fifty years.
Gage, you remember when they put those in?
I do, yeah. In fact, I might have been labor on it.
Yeah.
Well, you'd only been five. Come on then.
No, no, fifty years ago, I would have been, no, I was in college, asshole. Now, wouldn't be many, not fifty. I was too old to do that.
Okay.
Anyway.
And so this change order is to replace those two crossings under the, under the road there, under twenty-two hundred north with an eighteen inch metal, uh, concrete pipe. We had thirty-six inch in the project. That's thirty-six inch pipe, but we didn't need thirty-six under the road, so we got a price on eighteen inch. Um, the price to add these is it's, it's essentially twenty thousand. We're gonna, the thirty-six inch was gonna go to the north side of twenty-three hundred north. Um, but we're gonna end it on the south side of the road, so we're not crossing through that asphalt. That'll come. That'll come in a future phase when the rest of the project keeps going from where we'll end. But to save a little bit of money and not open up that asphalt, uh, we're gonna save.
Where are you gonna take it? I'm confused because.
So, right now, have you, there's the thrower building that's just got started, construction just north of the Valley Copy.
Yeah.
It'll, now this project will end in there south, the curb on the south side of the road in the inlet that's right there. We were gonna go across the street into that yard by the trail. Um, but now we'll, we'll end it short. That will save us twenty-two thousand. Um, for now, and then, so in essence, this change order is about seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars to swap that amount of pipe and a manhole and put in these two crossings. And so that's the proposal I'm putting before you is, uh, to enter into this change order with Mary Construction to add an eighteen inch, um, in those two locations. Any questions?
Commissioner Bowles questions?
I don't think so.
Commissioner Frew.
No, makes sense.
Okay.
So I'm assuming you just don't wanna leave that whole pipe in there.
Correct, yeah. Yep, at this point where they hit it, and they, they actually might not even do it till next spring.
Oh.
Because of the asphalt and.
Will they be able to do it next spring? Because I, wouldn't it be advantageous to get it in and then get some stuff settled with the pressure of the snow on top?
They, they were worried about getting the asphalt back together, so it, it'll be when it's doable, when, when the construction's feasible.
I worry about, I just worry about so much water going through there.
Yeah.
I don't want there to be another problem, cuz I, everything I hear is the compaction, the snow load on top of the earth is what really helps settle things. I'm worried about compaction, but if they know and they can, I know you can't do asphalt in the winter, in fact, they're about done making it. But there's.
Yeah, we're pushing it these days.
You're giving a couple of weeks maybe.
Yeah, but I'm.
Yeah, it just comes down to asphalt versus.
You have a gravel road, yeah, the pad, the compaction.
Move the dice.
Yeah, so it would be pushed back probably into April or May of next year.
Okay.
When they can get good asphalt to put back in.
That's big runoff time, big, super big, huge.
Uh, the other, um, item related to Eden Acres is, uh, when we were going to stake out the boxes to do the survey for construction, we asked the company that designed the storm drain system to provide the CAD drawing, the digital version. They asked if we would sign this waiver of release for this electronic file. Um, I sent it to Courtland. Courtland reviewed it and said, this is something the commissioners should look at and sign. Um, this isn't something Ashley.
Proprietary or something like that, or is it, is it, they don't want the information out? What's the?
So that's, that's the same question I had for the surveyors. I talked to them about what, what is this release? What are we signing off? It's essentially, since they're giving us a digital version that can be manipulated.
Oh.
They don't wanna be blamed for any changes that we might make on purpose or accident that change from their design that's in a PDF format. And so they said, this is a very standard, um, document for digital files that get shared. And so there, it's, they, they said, yeah, we, we do this with our digital files that we send to people. And so I'm just here, I don't know if you have anything to add, Courtland?
Just that because it's in the nature of a contract, I just advised Ashley that he shouldn't sign it. He should bring it to you because of technically.
That's great. We enter into those things. Any questions? Any questions?
No, thank you. Here we go.
Hey, does this go through a commission meeting? It will, okay.
See if there are.
Put it on a consent.
A consent item, okay. And then same with the change order?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have. The only other thing that's on my mind is eighteen hundred south. We've presented a contract. Yeah, well, it's a minor thing, but, uh, eighteen hundred south, we're put, doing a storm drain project from where Stagecoach ends to the east, running it over to where Halcyon ran their forty-eight inch, kinda just filling in that gap. Uh, when I presented the contract, you asked when it would be done, right? Do you remember that?
Sure.
I said soon.
Yeah, soon.
Yeah, yeah, and you made a joke about that, so the contract date was to be done November first, right?
How about that?
Uh-oh.
And by the way, November first was Friday. Of this year.
Of this year. Yeah, we ran into a snag with the secondary water.
How fortuitous.
Being in the way.
Yeah.
So they have not started nor completed said project.
Is there liquidated damages, damages because they're delayed?
No, I mean, they're, this is, uh, we're trying to work with hip irrigation to get their line removed.
Not gonna be any asphalt on top of it, is it?
No, it's off to the north side, so. No, but it's, it's not ideal, and, uh, I felt bad that I told you November first.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Update, y'all.
So maybe November first of twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah, it sounds like they're gonna start next week is what they're saying, and we've ironed things out with hip irrigation. Yeah, this.
Just make.
You're not the first today, Ashley.
No, no, it's good.
Great. Wonderful time. November eleventh. Eleven eleven, that's great.
So, just wanted to give you an update on that one. And, yeah, I believe we've worked everything out with hip irrigation to get that. You know, first we put it off cuz we didn't want people to be out of irrigation water. So we delayed the start, and then another hiccup came along, but. So I wanted to come clean to you on that.
Okay.
Yeah, any, any questions or?
Well, I just thought we talked about eighteen hundred where we had the opportunity.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, it's ongoing.
Okay.
Right on time, look at that, we're doing really good. Let's switch out the room again.
I think this will be good. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, look who's here.
Wow.
What a treat. Wow.
No, you won't.
Hello.
I brought, I brought a posse today.
There you did.
Right there.
We've got enough spots.
Come on in.
Right.
I need this in a writing.
I take.
We've got an extra chair.
Welcome to our, uh, item number seven of our commission work session today. Glad to have you here. We're gonna start with Commissioner Frew and, uh, uh, and then go around the room on this.
Like to introduce her, Joe?
You please, thank you.
Commissioner Frew, Weaver County.
Stephanie Russell, Weaver County Economic Development.
I'm joining.
John Bond, Scott Park in the back.
Kevin, Kevin Eastman with Weaver Human Services.
Julie Johnson with United Way.
Brian Callen with Weaver Morgan Health Department.
Thank you.
Ryan Harvey, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Hello, Brayce, Weaver County Sheriff's Office.
Chad Burton, Human Services.
Susanna Burt, Weaver Human Services.
Bryce Sherwood with the Brian Health Department.
Mashlin Peck with, uh, Weaver County Economic Development.
Just a part.
Chairman Bowles, Weaver County Commission.
And. Yeah, Jim Harvey, Commission. Okay, let's, uh, Mr. Bond, thank you so much for putting this together. And I really, uh, forward to this. Thank you so much for facilitating a kind of great thing. We've had to, in fairness to this room, uh, Mr. Bond and I sat down, uh, Port's tailing the last week, and he kind of told us, give us a heads up with what's happening and really appreciate that, so go ahead, John.
Thank you very much. Hmm, two years ago yesterday, which was eleven-three, two thousand twenty-two, we received money in the bank. It was three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. It was for a lawsuit that was nationally orchestrated amongst several large pharmacy companies and retailers, and with, uh, an agreement that the Utah Attorney General's Office signed with this national agenda. The counties here in Utah are all receiving funds. We are anticipating receiving about twenty, twenty-one million dollars. That first page you can see there shows the tentative being planned. The chart on the bottom and on the right shows eighty percent. The attorneys are taking fifteen percent or so, the, all the plans are being delivered to this lawsuits.
Sorry, John, we don't have that.
Oh. Mr. Paul, you should, there you go.
Sorry to interrupt. I wanted to get too far ahead of me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He's a sharer. So the bottom half, eighty percent is probably a better reflection of where we might end up, which is, uh, nineteen million one, but it's potentially twenty million, three thousand, uh, until twenty thirty-eight, so in the next fourteen years, all that will be delivered to the county. So the plan is that, currently, like the next page, it shows all the payments we've got and all the different, uh, uh, different entities that are contributing to that lawsuit. Then you have, um, two, four, six, eight, nine different entities currently. There might be others that added this, added those list of payments, but, uh, as of right now, we got four point eight million dollars in the bank that's been delivered over the last two years. We put together a group of wonderful people. It's been a treat the last couple of months to work with everybody here on that side, but it's also a treat to work with you guys too, I'm sure.
More of a trick.
Anyway, it's been such a good thing to get all these people together and just listen to them and have them explore, and I can only wait for the next fifteen minutes to have them share with you their feelings or experiences, that's how they've been as far as how they want to change the dynamics in the, in the county as far as how opioid, uh, addiction is, is challenged here in the community with individuals and families. Oh, story, I wasn't gonna do this, but, um, my neighbor right away had an issue, came home from the hospital. And probably because of, uh, an unintentional consequence of a feeling died. And, um, I'm impacted by that. I've been looking through those eyes as we've been going through this meeting, so I how would that have changed? How could it have changed? Where are we today? He's now gone. And I'm sad. So. Anyway, that's what we're dealing with, with this topic is all of us, many of us have personal experiences of people who passed because of, you know, addiction or addicted now or are challenged by that, the consequence of drug addiction and all that that goes with them. It's through those eyes, I think, so professionally, these guys see this every day. I know. I do want taxpayers, you know? But having that feeling, that consequence in my life is powerful. And I very much appreciate their willingness and ability to work in that world and manage those events and then look to ways to change the trajectory in our community, and I'm looking forward to what they're gonna do. The next page shows, uh, what we're deciding to do is, uh, have the Health Department, their health services, take a dramatic and significant, uh, position in what they're doing. And then we're gonna ask the Weaver Conservative, or I'm sorry, United Way to, uh, take, uh, a lead position in what we're calling cares for you, whatever we're gonna call it, it's a concept of cares. The way the Bowles down money-wise is, uh, Health Department initially, we're looking at twenty-two percent refunds coming through them, going through them, United Way about thirty-nine percent, and we, we service about thirty-nine percent for about a three-year window to test the waters and see if we did this landing and making a big difference. Sorry, and, uh, with that case, it'd be about three point eight million dollars of that five point eight million dollars in the bank. And that would be a three-year journey to jump into this and see if we can make a big difference. I'd like these guys to take a minute and explain each of those areas. I'd like these guys to take a minute and explain each of those areas, um. Julie and I are gonna talk a little bit about the United Way portion here in a second, or like maybe start with the health department on the two main areas that they've got. Look at the Weaver Human Services and get them going. We've got. Let's say twenty million dollars as our, as our plan. We're looking at half of them to introduce in jail setting. And if we can have the sheriff chief maybe to speak a little bit of what the issues are in jails too, and we can add that to the conversation and, uh. So that will be a different discussion today as far as the details of that portion. As far as the jail portion, but today we're gonna focus a little bit more on health department. Weaver Human Services, United Way, and how we can help other entities come in from a variety of different directions to attack this challenge. And, uh, so if that's okay, we can just have maybe the health department start out, that'd be all right. Then Weaver Human Services and we'll, like, go talk a little bit with the jail.
Is there an opportunity to throw this up on a screen, a PowerPoint, a presentation for the data? If not, we can talk through it. We've got some printouts, we can.
Do you have it on a thumb drag?
I have it on the thumb drag.
We could plug it into that computer back there and they'll pull it up or.
So I'm gonna, there's a keyboard here and a mouse here.
Pull this up, make it a little easier. We can go through this quickly. I just wanted to cover some of the data real quick. There's always the question of, is this an issue? How much of an issue? What are we looking at? So as we go into the data and looking at some of our health district data. Weaver Morgan Health Department is the third highest as far as opioid overdose deaths by local health department. Frye County out in the vernal area would be second, southeast down in the price general area. Um, would be the the first in the state. The state rate is about fourteen point three. It's a rate of per one hundred thousand. And so again, Weaver Morgan, just for our area, our health district. Were the third highest in the state. Uh, drug overdose deaths by geography, again, we're looking at just Weaver County versus Utah. Uh, but again, we're, we're above what Utah is. Um, and have been since about twenty fourteen. So again, we have some elevated. Hopefully, this isn't any new information. Uh, it's unfortunate and sad. But this is why these funds are needed within our area. The drug overdose deaths by group and geography, so again, Weaver County being the blue, Utah being the orange. And looking at it by age group, that, uh, again, every category, every age group, we are above what the state. Rate is. And all of these, or a lot of these data come from Ibis. I should say that Ibis is the indicator, information based indicator system, which is the state health. Run by the State Health Department. And those numbers come from a myriad of other data sources. So then we have our opioid overdose deaths per one hundred thousand again by, uh, did I go backwards? Nope. By geography, again, looking at our rates over the, almost the last ten years there. Again, above the state average. Overdose deaths involving synthetic opioids other than methadone. And again, that would include our sentinel related, um, uh, substances. A similar trajection or projection of of increase there, but again, above what the state rates are. Per one hundred thousand. And then our by small area, so as we look at some of these data and when it says Ben Loman, we're not looking at the Ben Loman High School. It's, it's more by zip code, so that would be up north in the, north end of the county. Weber County, downtown Ogden, South Ogden, Roy Hopper, and then, um, overall Weaver County in Utah. So again, as we look at any opioid would be the blue, the natural or semi synthetic would be the orange and synthetic opioids excluding. Oh, I apologize for my typo there, just called that out. So excluding methadone there. Uh, again, some of our rates per one hundred thousand. Uh, any opioid, uh, the combination of the two, but again, we have some elevated rates within our area. And so as we look at some of those data, that's why these, I think these proposals have been put together. I think that's why as a collective group. We've been able to come to a consensus, uh, as far as that goes. So Brian.
The last three or so years, the Health Officers Association in the state have been really looking at this opioid funding. And doing some planning on what we believe was, it would be the best approach statewide to utilize this funding. And we've recognized in the process that we have an immediate need for treatment. Uh, but if we focus only on treatment activities, it it doesn't become sustainable. We're always just reacting instead of taking a more proactive approach. And so as we've kind of projected in the future, what we think, uh, what the health officers in the state think would be a good way for areas to use this money. And as we've approached our state legislature with our proposals, we've, we've come up with this, uh. Idea or plan, uh, where we start initially heavily weighted with these funds going towards treatment related opportunities. And then gradually transitioning over time, uh. Diverting a little bit less money from treatment as, as those issues are being addressed. And put, applying some more of those funds towards. Prevention efforts, uh, a little bit, being a little bit more upstream in the approach and trying to address the issue earlier. Uh, rather than, than reacting to it. And I just, I share this to let you know what the health officers have been working on in their planning model, and as we have met, uh, as a group. To look at how to use these funds in our county, I think our. Our group has landed in a very similar discussion, uh, with the proposals we've put together. We recognize that there's. A large need for treatment related activities at the Sheriff's Department and with Weaver Human Services and their programs. Uh, but we also feel like with, uh, proposals we're coming to you with, we've, uh. Uh, allowed for some funding to be diverted towards prevention and utilized in those efforts. We feel like in, as part of this proposal, we wanna, we wanna explore it. We wanna put it to use for three years. Uh, come back and measure this, this, uh, success of the efforts, uh, and then adjust if needed. Uh, and so I feel, I feel like this approach we've taken in Weaver County to, to arrive, arrive with what we've brought you today. Uh, falls in line with what our State Health Officers Association has been, uh, suggesting is a good, good use of the funds.
So the overall budget proposals, and we'll go through each one, uh, that John has already illustrated or talked about. One would be the positive messaging campaign, an opioid committee, the community projections. Uh, again, that would be from United Way, some of those projects. I said projections can mean projects and then a Weaver Human Services proposal. So again, we're looking at a one point two. Almost one point three every year rounding out at three point eight or so for the three years. And so we'll go through each of those proposals. Oh, I apologize. There's one for each commissioner. So that you can have those numbers in front of you. I apologize. We're going through the first one, and I'm gonna have Susanna and Kevin jump in here. As this was originally Kevin's thought, but just kind of the science behind this is that a lot of our campaigns as of lately. Have really focused on the negative portion, meaning that so many of our students vape. Again, one out of six of our students with, according to our Sharp Data vape within high school. And instead of focusing on the deficit side of things, there's some new science, uh, new to us. But again, it's been around for a little bit, that if we focus on the positive side and say five out of six of our students do not vape. There is a, it's again, the same statistic, but it's a way to help promote some of the good things that are going on within the community. Uh, again, it helps to reduce some of the stigma. It increases that community connectedness. Again, no one wants to be connected to a community that. Um, has a substance use disorder or some of those impacts. But there's a lot of good things that are going on within our community that we can connect to. The more we're connected, the better we are and the healthier behaviors we have. And so it again invites participation within those individuals of, hey, this is something I want to participate in. We look at one of the models, Susanna, you're the expert. Do you wanna talk about how this would impact it?
Yeah, I'm trying to take John's instructions, talking about thirty seconds. So this is the social development strategy, and essentially it looks at how are we going to build up our community? By do you provide opportunities, skills and recognition? And when we do those positive things, whether you do something in your, uh, cities that you live in, like a. Um, youth council recognition, or you recognize, uh, an officer or someone for doing something good. That's what this is building that up. You wanna set out what the healthy goal, healthy behavior is. And start to train and get people's mind focused on that. So in a community like Ogden or Morgan. You have two different, you know, a city and a rural community, they're gonna look very different, but allow them to really build up with a campaign. What does that look like? We have this need. We have, um. Things like, gosh, so many people are eating dinner together. We wanna encourage that. So that's the focus of giving that skill to the families or a caregiver. Or even the school, something that they can really hang on to and actually work towards.
Yep, as we, yeah, yeah. I think with all those, it creates that bond, creates that community connectedness. It's an, uh, not completely developed idea. Again, it started, it was voiced by Kevin. Uh, you, uh, the Weaver Human Services, it's similar to other campaigns we have going on in the area. And so working with our local partners, or working with other ad agencies. Um, but the biggest, one of the bigger partners here would be Weaver State University. We have an existing campaign, we went to their community or communications college students. And they developed the Purple Champion, something that they did. It's all within the science base. That's their major. It's something I don't understand being health promotion. But again, working with our partners, really creating this positive media thing. Evan?
Just quickly, we just add canvassing the whole county with a consistent message. Having cities, uh, municipality vehicles, law enforcement vehicles that are. Everyone is just campaigning this, it's a positive message, no matter where you go in the county, you're hearing. About the positive push of eliminating opiate use in the county. And utilizing our resources to do that.
I don't know if there's a point where we stop for questions, again, if we keep going.
Good, thank you, Bruce.
Yeah.
Some of the questions so far, Commissioner Boz, Commissioner Furrow, questions so far?
No, thanks.
That's good.
Okay. The second proposal would be again, coming from this end of the table, our opioid committee. So there's an existing opioid committee called the Super Team Substance Use Prevention Emergency Response Committee. It's a committee that consists of treatment, prevention, uh, recovery. Law enforcement, school, it's a pretty comprehensive committee. And so we would propose that the, these funds be used in this manner here. Again, commissioners, you've got more of the details. Of where that would actually go, but the personnel, there doesn't need to be someone naturally to help run and facilitate, moderate this type of a committee. And then some travel. That we proposed three conferences and really to build the infrastructure within the county. Not just within the health department, but really to help set up the stage really well as a county, as a community. And build our leadership group. Uh, so there's three conferences. One would be the RX Summit. Typically held in Atlanta or, or the east area. It has different disciplines within this conference for law enforcement, education, prevention. We've gone treatment, recovery, uh, we've gone once before and it really was very comprehensive. As far as an RX or a prescription, uh, opioid substance use conference. So the other one would be Bryce Canyon, more on the coalition building side of things. That's held down at Bryce Canyon. On an annual basis, a lot of our communities that care, CTCs utilize this as a way to help build the infrastructure of community coalitions. And the last one would be one that was held just recently down in St. George, the Substance Use Fall Conference. Again, they bring in national speakers and it has lots of tracks, not just limited to treatment or recovery. Prevention, education, law enforcement are also included. And so really building that travel into those, uh, five people for each of those conferences to build that infrastructure. Then we have some supplies that we were proposing in some of this, uh, some of those. I think I gave away all my budget stuff, but we'll do it from memory. Some of those would be to.
I've got an extra copy here.
Oh, yeah, I think.
Cause I had one from the other day, so you're.
Oh, perfect. So some of those would be some of the supplies that go along with those campaigns. Some of the, uh. Trainings that we wanna provide for law enforcement, some listening sessions to really figure out how do we help support them. Uh, our, our prescribers and really have some good listening sessions and build out some of those data as far as that goes, um.
Medical, so you've got the medical conference and the gang conference. Um, those are two groups in the area, in our county that we're looking to work with. Um, because we know that law enforcement has to deal with certain outcomes, and so the, it's the Ogden, it's the, let's stay in the. Ogden Community Crime Conference, right? Did I get it right? Okay. Um, we've talked to her about speaking and working with that group. Um, and we've already worked or reached out to the, um, people who are coordinating the medical conference that's held up at Weaver State. And then, um. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say the CTCs, cause that's what I like.
Yeah.
The CTC is providing, um, funding for them, each of the CTCs to set up a plan that they're going to address. The opioids in their community and be five thousand dollars per area.
So one of the things is, we put this together is that we were cognizant and really tried to consider. What was already going and happening in the community. The health department, for example, already has fifty thousand for four years, going towards certain parts of the opioid efforts. And so this would not be duplicative. This would help enhance what is already happening and filling in some of those gaps. Again, you've got some of those detailed subcontractors, just to make sure that we're evaluating, that we're collecting our data to show in the end of the three years. That this is a, in impactful. And we are better off because of these funds. And then there's just the, the normal admin fees, again, a total of a hundred and seventy seventy, eight hundred and two dollars there. We did in the year two and three, we did just add the two percent cola as a projection. Kind of the normal basis there. So that's the second proposal. Questions? Clarifications?
One question. So who's on your committee? Has that been decided?
It's been a committee that has already been established for three years, so we have.
It's this group then?
Not necessarily, no.
These agencies, but not necessarily these people, but it's about, uh, fifteen, twenty people strong.
Okay, got it.
And I can provide that roster, go through the names of.
But these four agencies. Thank you.
Well, well, and also Weaver State. Secret Clinic, Midtown Clinic.
I did have one to discuss, of course, to the chair. So going back to your messaging campaign. First off, I like the positive messaging. I think that's been proven to work better than. Trying to convince people they shouldn't do something, tell them what they should do. Always tends to, so who's, who's gonna run that campaign or you, who's gonna be in charge of that campaign? Who's leading it?
It's a great question, Kevin, I'm kicking it to you. I would.
Back to you and Susanna, you guys lead our prevention teams. It's the health department and we're human services partnering on it.
Yeah.
All right, so you didn't, my question is, you didn't do this internal or external? You didn't hire an outside firm?
Well, we talked to Weaver State's.
Yeah.
The communication college.
Ogden Teak or something.
Yeah.
But it's the communication school, and that's why we went up there to see if. But it's the communication school and that's why we went up there to see if they're using it as a project to build.
Okay.
I think that's where it starts, but then to get it countywide, we're gonna have to work with some type of a firm or media campaign company. That hasn't been decided.
I'll say, yeah, for, to get the message out.
Yeah.
I'm sure they could create something very workable at Weaver State, but I don't, I don't think, in fact, I know they don't have the ability to.
Yeah.
With the contacts to spread the message.
Yeah.
Right. Commissioner, I think that this kind of lands on the reflection of the relationship that Weaver, Morgan Health Department and Weaver Human Services have. And Kevin and I have been committed for the last few years. To work collaborative and closely on these type of activities, so we're not duplicating each other's efforts, but. More amplifying our efforts and uh I I think uh to a degree, if we, you know, this proposal is approved. Uh, the two of us can work out with our staff the nuances of who who directing what activities. Uh, but it was, it's certainly going to be a collaborative effort without.
Yeah, but you do want to go to some type of external source to.
Yes, we want to have someone.
Yeah, that's my question, okay, thanks, sorry.
Thank. Um, oh, gonna skip through that one, you talked about that, so I'm gonna go with you again.
That's great, I've got to hand up for each one of you here, it's just a brief explanation of our two proposals and I will go through these very quickly, if you have questions. Please speak up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, the first one is a full-time therapist for medication assisted treatment. MAT is used primarily for individuals who have used opiates. For long periods of time and are trying to come off of them um in a humane way. So there's medication assistance to help them do that. We provide a lot of MAT at Weaver Human Services, so in the last year, we had about three hundred and eighty. Clients come through and participate in medication assisted treatment to help them get off of primarily opiates. Ninety of those individuals, um eighty actually, well, it's ninety on here. Ninety decided they didn't want to participate in traditional treatment such as therapy, group therapy. They just wanted to get the medication assisted treatment. So research shows if you participate in traditional treatment, evidence-based treatment, individual group therapy and medication assistance. That your likelihood of getting better goes way up. Well, these ninety clients decided they didn't want to participate in evidence-based treatment outside of the medication. And we we gave them what they wanted, we gave them the medication, we felt that was better than nothing, but what we want to do is hire a clinician, a full-time clinician to work down in our. Uh, medical team, right by our primary care clinic is where we offer the MAT. And to work to motivate and and engage these individuals to get into treatment as well, not just medication, but. Evidence-based therapy. And we think that that will help those ninety individuals, at least a high percentage of those, engage in better treatment and get better. This. Uh, relates directly to the the priorities that were spelled out by the state of treating these individuals that are using opiates. Uh, inappropriately. So that's our first request, a hundred and fifty thousand isn't, that's for everything, that's for benefits and all of the above. And we think that that would be enough to hire a good seasoned clinician in our clinic to do this. Not all the services that they would be providing are billable and that's why we would need additional funding, it's not just a Medicaid person we can put down there to to follow up with these individuals, it's gonna be a different type of job. Calling, going to homes, trying to engage individuals to get them back into treatment, that's what we want. So that's our first request. Um, our second request is. A resident, a a treatment center connected to our our men's residential facility, so Weaver Human Services, we have two residential facilities on our substance team. One is Tranquility Home, which is our women and children's facility, which is on our campus. Even with it being on our campus, we have a treatment center that was built next door to Tranquility Home for the women. To get treatment as a group in the residential facility. So they don't have, even have to cross our parking lot to go across the street to hop in with groups with everybody else. Uh, the women in in our residential go to their own treatment facility and participate in sort of therapeutic community in the residential. Uh, helps them through their recovery, helps them relate very well to the others that are there, gain trust. Anyway, we've had really good outcomes with that. Our men's facility is up at twenty seven forty-five Madison. And it is only a residential facility, it does not have a treatment center attached. We are not allowed by licensing to do treatment in the residential, nor is their space. So this is a twenty-nine bed facility. That would be if it's very packed, we have about twenty that uh on our census typically, we we have about twenty. And these men are are men who have come out of prison, come out of jail, referred by APNP, and there are some self-referrals as well. But all of them have substance use issues, many of them have opiate-related issues. So what we'd like to do, and we've been trying to do this for years, is come up with the money to build a facility up there. Um, early projections say it's gonna be just over a million dollars to build a facility, uh, a treatment facility right next door. Then the men don't have to be transported down to treatment multiple times a day, back and forth. And also we can have a treatment community where men don't have to go to treatment with the general population. We believe that the same success we've had at Tranquility Home can be had with the men as well, leading to better outcomes. So that that is our second proposal, it'd be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars over three years. What John has mentioned is that we may be able to get the funding for the first year, hire an architect and make sure that. We're ready to roll and in the second year, we may be able to front load years two and three to finish to to actually build the building. Um, so we don't have to wait for three years to actually put the money in the bank and then build it and our cost might be more expensive at that time. Those are our two proposals, any questions?
Mr. Fora? So, just so I'm clear, so this would be, you'd have beds in this facility along treatment. Follow what you've done with the females, or would you keep the males up on Madison?
So the males would stay up on Madison and they would stay in the residential facility adjacent to that, but separate, but on the same property, we would build a treatment center.
Also, the treatment center goes there.
It goes there, and we've done that for the women, even down there, they have a small treatment center that is just for the residential, we would do the same for the men.
You talked to the city? Uh, yeah. Oh, yeah. You may want to do that. Yeah, but it's a, it wouldn't be a residential, it would be treatment, so I think that they'd be more agreeable.
I would still talk to the city.
Yeah, we we definitely plan to do that and all of this obviously would have to be on hold pending approval from the city.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, Kevin, it started to go down this road a couple of years ago and we never came up with the funding for the facility and uh we we do think it's a. A great request, uh, would be great for the man in the treatment community up there.
Okay, good suggestion, Commissioner Boz, questions, questions?
Go ahead, Jim.
I did, that's all. We'll shift gears again, uh, it's our time, bye-bye.
Yeah.
Two thirty-six. Okay. Can we take nine more minutes?
Yeah.
You have it.
Thank you, okay, uh. Julie's been kind enough to offer her experience in community to help us with our third proposal, that is, take thirty-nine percent of this money every year. Five hundred thousand dollars and act like cares-ish. She knows all of the different entities in the community who could qualify to propose. Solutions for our community. We want to come from different angles and hopefully you can see that different angles are happening here, we're not just doing one thing, but it's coming from different angles. Messaging, the uh, the MAT, the the treatment up there with with this building. This one is completely different in the sense that brings all the other different entities who are not participating yet in this proposal to the table and say. Why cares, give us a proposal, we're gonna have a million dollars a year for the next three years. What do you think could happen? And then we've got those, bring them to you. If I walk through, it might take two or three or four months to bring that framework together. We got some ideas, we can do that. And uh, that's kind of where we're headed with the next uh five hundred thousand a year for the next three years, is to bring all these different other elements to play. Who might participate in that proposal process, given as far as ideas?
Yeah, just to give you an idea, first off, not United Way. It was said a couple of times at the beginning of the meeting, United Way, five hundred thousand, United Way doesn't have any direct services for opioids. So just want to make sure, United Way would be helping to um maybe. Uh, amplify the opportunity to other nonprofits, we've had a few nonprofits that have reached out to me directly or to others in the community and then they've. Uh, sent them my direction, but just to let you know, there's a few after-school projects that already have prevention work in their um. In their program and so looking to increase some of that uh prevention work would be in alignment with the. Um, topics that are outlined in the state blueprint. And I think, you know, opening this up for the community projects would also open up to. The additional strategies that are outlined in the state project where. We have focused specifically on the prevention and treatment here with the proposals that you've seen so far. But allowing additional opportunities in those five strategies for the state. That's in the state proposal and so. Um, I also think it wouldn't be beneficial to just limit it to nonprofits, the school district, for example, has. Some efforts already in place for um addressing some prevention work there, so they're looking to expand the work that they're doing. As has um OPD, Ogden Police Department, so I I think just knowing, you know, what's out there, the opportunity. And and then also if you're in agreement that um allowing. This money to be used in a variety of ways to be able to approach um this medication of this.
That's something that'd be an enhancement um with the positive messaging campaign because they.
I have that note, say that, yeah, no, no, you're good. No, that's, that's good, I'm glad you said that. One thing we talked about, we have drafted a um request for a proposal of what would be contained if we were to put this out there, you know, based on your approval. And one thing that we talked about as a committee to amplify that positive messaging is. Any nonprofit or entity that receives these dollars would be required to use that same uh positive messaging, so then it's amplifying it even further. So that goes, Commissioner, to what you were asking about, you know, how we're going to get that positive messaging out. Requiring anyone that's using these opioid dollars to be using that positive messaging, just ensures that it's amplified and and. Further stretch in the, in the community, so.
What we've done then, in summary, is we've got twenty million dollars over the next fourteen years that we'll have available. For this cause, uh, half of it is with the presentations that you've had so far, about ten million dollars worth. We're gonna take three point eight right now with your info. And begin structuring this all out over the next few months and getting it to work. Separate, apart from that, is a whole different agenda to jail that is, that addresses a whole different group of people and challenges. And he's maybe just to take a couple of minutes on that second half of this ten million and maybe outline a couple of things that you're seeing with the jail.
I mean, perfect, um, so I would actually say, John, that. We share the same clientele, generally speaking, um. We share them pretty well, generally speaking, um. And you all have felt the effects of opioid opioids in the last year or so, fentanyl in particular, with us uh pulling back and not. Participating in community release with some of our incarcerated population because of. The crisis that fentanyl has brought into our facility, um. For twenty-one years I've done this now and I've watched addiction go from alcohol and methamphetamines to this opioid addiction. Which is just more challenging to wrap our arms around, um. When a community member comes into our facility and is suffering through an opioid overdose, it's harder to turn around. Um, traditionally, you give one dose of Narcan and we're done and going forward and and now with fentanyl, they're continuing to do Narcan. Dosages up into the ICU, which is mind-boggling for me, right? We used to be able to stabilize them, get them up to the ICU, get them cleared and bring them right back and we don't do that now, we're spending days up at a hospital. Bringing them down and out of that, so. And then in closing, I would echo uh Mr. Bond's sentiments, that this is a fantastic group. Like, I am so honored to be part of it, um, we've done a lot of work recently with Weaver Human Services and our Coalition. Um, with reentry services and this just feels like an extension of that community collaboration moving forward. Well, thank you.
Good, I hope in the coming months, we will probably flesh out the jail portion of these ten million, today we don't have all that in in its, all its detail. But we hope to come to you later on with that detail, but today at least, we've got. Uh, a good portion of this ready to go and launch. We're gonna develop this framework for the uh five hundred thousand for the the Julie's. Been willing to help us with a little bit as far as other other entities. And at this point, I'd like to hit the go button and let's get some of these strategies underway, I'm just wondering what about your thoughts?
Commissioner Boz.
Go button, you've done a fantastic job and I know what you do, like, let's go. There's been a lot of thought going into this.
Yeah, absolutely, so I look back on three, three and a half years ago when we had a group. Probably a little about this size, they came in, everybody wanted to be king for the day, they wanted to be in charge of those funds. And I said, come back when you can play well in the sandbox. It looks like you have, under the direction of Mr. John Bond here, played very well in the sandbox, this is great, it's gonna be good for the community. I think it, you've hit all those targets for messaging all the way through, so, uh, I, I'm a yes on this for sure. And for the three point eight, yeah, I am, best of luck. And I really appreciate you bringing in United Way as the CARES Act designee, because I think there are some nonprofits.
Yeah.
And United Way will do a great job rather than them having come to somebody else. Julie can do that, so.
She can guide us through that.
We can guide, and you need, you need help here, go see Julie, so, I think it's perfect.
There's supposed to be confetti coming out.
We, we feel it, thank you, thank you very much.
Probably, uh, no, we.
That's what you gotta go. Would you mind reciting that going ahead then for me, please?
Thank you.
Oh.
It's in writing.
All of us are in the sign.
I want it in writing.
You're not taking a chance, are you?
No. It's just who I am, you know that. Commissioners, I love this group. I look forward to it, I appreciate all the support you've given us so far, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
This is a big thing.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Good luck, Mr. Bond.
Here, Commissioners, we've just finished this presentation, if I could have my mouse back, Bryce, uh. Don't walk out of here with all the goodies now. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the character and confidence of an individual. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, we're gonna go into closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work, John. That was a good group to bring together, I mean. Yeah, you did.
Hold on, guys, I can't get the.
Sit on the other side of the table.
Uh, just a minute, just a second, I can't get.
Happy to be for a quick moment.
It's great.
Going into closed session.
We're going to end the closed session.